Good evening. The regular meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission of Tuesday, June 12th, 2018, will now come to order. Could we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Gomez?
Here.
Commissioner Gooding?
Here.
Commissioner Mackin?
Here.
Commissioner Patel?
Here.
Commissioner Sayasan?
Here.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that all commissioners are here this evening. First item, the agenda. Do we have any changes from our commissioners to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
Move to accept.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Agenda is passed as if. Consent calendar. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the commission on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Could we have a motion to adopt the consent calendar? Actually, we don't need the motion because we have nothing on it. Thank you. Oral communications. Anyone in the audience wish to address? No? Okay, seeing none. Written communications, we have none, so we move on to new business. Tonight, we have a public hearing. This is for a project. This is permit UP 3-18661, San Bruno Avenue in R3. It's a residential district. Could we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chairperson. So, the request before you this evening is for design review, grading review, variance, fence exception, and use permit for a new four-unit condominium building at 661 San Bruno Avenue. The grading is required due to the amount of soil cut and export from the site. The variance is requested to allow a 30-foot height limit for the new structure. Fence exception is requested to allow an eight-foot solid fence in the north side yard. And the use permit is required to allow a portion of the driveway aisle to be substandard in width, as well as provision of a compact parking space for one of the units where a standard-sized space is required. And just to note that a tentative parcel map was also submitted by the applicant, which is currently incomplete, awaiting approval of this design permit, and you all will review it at a future meeting. So, just to orient you to the site, here's some photos of the existing single-family dwelling at this location. So, the photos show the existing structure, which currently has a driveway and curb cut, about nine-foot curb cut. And then, some of the photos also show the adjacent development to this property, one of those being a single-family home at 637 San Bruno, and a multifamily structure at 665 and 675 San Bruno. This property is about 7,000 square feet in size. The slope is about 14 percent, measured per our method required in the municipal code. Does feature a northwest cross-slope. So, here's a summary of the project and how it relates to the code requirements. This is in the R3 residential district, our multifamily district. So, as you can see, I've highlighted the areas of nonconformity with those standards. So, again, the proposed height, maximum height of 30 feet, where 28 is required, as well as the use permit for the modifications to the driveway and space dimensions and the grading. Other than those items, and the fence exception as well, this project complies with all other standards in the R3 district. So, here's an overview of the site plan. Shown a couple of annotations here on the slide. So, the building outline is shown in dark purple, property line shown in red, as well as the area along the north side lot line where the eight-foot fence is proposed. So, you can see here, they're proposing to widen the existing curb cut from nine feet to 18 feet, which is the maximum for residential. And the driveway aisle would then allow access to covered spaces at the first level. This isn't fully enclosed. It's a podium-style garage, so it's open on two sides. The property would be accessed by a covered entry stairway at the front of the building, as well as an elevator at the ground level accessed from that parking area. And here's just some overview of the first floor plan. Again, accommodating the parking, you can see there the proposed parking space dimensions as pertinent to their request for the use permit. Also on that level are the required storage areas, mechanical, and elevator access. On the second floor, that's where the living spaces begin. Their first floors of units 1, 2, and 3, and then the entirety of unit 4 are located at that level. And then, going up to the third floor, the second stories of units 1, 2, and 3. Here's a building section showing a longitudinal section of the building. The residential areas have ceiling heights at eight feet, one inch, so fairly modest in ceiling height. The ceiling height of the parking area is, you know, due to design standards, actually much higher than that, which is part of why they are requesting the height variance as well. And here are the elevations of the structure to the north and the south, the sides of the building. We've also provided, the proposed colors and materials are shown there in fairly small images, and you'll note that I provided in a rotisheet at the dais that actually show the current color names for those exterior finishes. And the applicant also has a materials board he'll distribute. And here are some renderings provided by the applicant, showing a pretty good idea of how this structure will sit within the site. You can see the proposed retaining walls are, for the most part, not visible from off-site. You know, they're fairly below a cut slope. The tallest exposed wall you can see on the south side is tall when measured to the interior of the driveway aisle, but actually does not extend very high off of finished grade from the neighboring property at the south. They've also provided a conceptual landscape plan, as required in the design permit. So, this is a fairly robust plan, proposes a wide variety of shrubs, trees, ground covers. I want to just note that this is conceptual. At building permit stage, a final landscape plan will be submitted that will require to show compliance with our water conservation and landscaping ordinance and any other pertinent regulations there. You can see in the front yard, they're providing more than the minimum requirement for front yard landscaping, and the rear yard is entirely dedicated to shared common areas that are So, there are a lot of permits requested with this application, and all of the findings are discussed in detail in the staff report, so I'll try to just hit on the highlights in my verbal presentation. So, in terms of the design permit, the various findings fall into four general groups. The first of which are findings related to compatibility with the neighborhood and surrounding development. So, generally, the applicant has proposed a building design that is compatible with neighboring development, both in terms of scale, orientation. The actual design and articulation of the structure really responds to the context of both the single-family dwelling to the north and the existing multifamily structure to the south. A lot of step backs of upper stories to allow light and air to not be obstructed between those existing residential buildings. In addition, the solid fence along the northern lot line, which would screen the parking facility at ground level from the single-family home, while they're requesting a fence exception for that, it would additionally help to screen the structure and parking area, provide additional buffers. The other group of findings relate to the actual building design and form and details. So, this is a craftsman-inspired, highly articulated building design. The exterior materials, which are proposed of hardy plank cement board siding with stucco, so a mix of materials, pretty neutral color scheme, complementary colors, as well as accents, like, you know, different roof line, breaking up the roof, and that sort of thing, really provides strong articulation of all the building facades, especially those side facades that we don't have articulation requirements, per se, in the code, but I think it responds, again, to the existing development on either side of this lot. Then, in regards to findings for site access and circulation, so, all six required parking spaces are provided onsite, obviously with some modifications to the standards as discussed in the use permit section, but they are all there onsite. One street space will remain along the property's frontage. There's an existing, about 35-foot length along the frontage, that doesn't technically qualify as two spaces in our municipal code, so that space will remain. It will be a little bit smaller. An onsite turnaround is also provided to make sure that cars will not be backing out onto San Bruno. Regards to landscaping, so, this project would provide more than the minimum amount of landscaping at about 21 percent of the total lot area. Again, we've required that the final landscape plans submitted at building permit provide additional details to demonstrate its compliance with our water conservation and landscaping ordinance. So, five trees would be removed from the site. I think the staff report said six, so I want to clarify, it's five. One tree, it looks like, has been removed already. These are fruit trees, neither of which qualify by size or species as protected under our code. They're proposing a lot of new trees on the site. They are requesting removal of a street tree to allow for the widening of the driveway. So, under our municipal code in Title 12, a street tree would be considered a protected tree. So, again, the staff report discusses in detail the merits of that request, and the staff report recommends granting that request and requiring replacement at a one-to-one ratio, with, of course, the city engineer having the final approval over where and what kind of tree that would be. So, and related to the height variance request, again, there are a variety of findings the commission has to make regarding whether or not this request would constitute a grant of special privilege. To respond to that, staff's recommended a condition of approval demonstrating that that section in question that exceeds the 28-foot height limit is as low as it possibly can be. In regards to special circumstances applicable to the property, this is a fairly deep lot. It has, it does have changes in grade that occur kind of in the middle rear portion of the yard that really aren't captured under our municipal code, which takes a straight kind of average calculation. This also has a northwest cross-slope, so the grade elevation at the north and south sides are slightly different, which means that most of the building does comply with the 28-foot height limit, and one portion of the building does not. But our code requires that we take the non-complying height segment as the maximum height for that building. And in terms of denied privileges, adjacent properties in the area in the same zoning district are developed with two levels of residential above covered parking. So, you can look right next door at 665 and 675 San Bruno, 693 San Bruno, 291 Santa Clara. Those are all examples of similar projects, similar massing, similar design. In that instance, strict application of the 20-foot height limit would limit development of a multifamily structure on this site. That's otherwise consistent with all other standards in the R3 district. And in regards to the use permit, so, we need to find that it's consistent with the general plan. So, in this case, there are two, general plan, a policy and a program that specifically address the sometimes conflicting in a relationship between our parking requirements and actual onsite grading and engineering design difficulties, the conflict between those two. And in regards to the request's impact to the health, safety, and general welfare, a previous staff analysis that was done found that a typical-sized standard vehicle would still be able to access the standard parking spaces, even though the driveway aisle width at that location would be, at its most, about 10 inches too narrow per our code. So, we wouldn't find any safety impact of allowing that width to be substandard of that portion of the aisle. In addition, providing a compact space in lieu of a standard space really wouldn't have any safety implications. The space would still be there and still be accessible. The additional findings for a use permit for parking, one of which is that there would be no strict enforcement required. So, again, in this case, all required parking spaces would be provided onsite, so we're not looking at a real enforcement situation where not all spaces are provided. They would all be there on the property. In addition, another section of our code in the parking ordinance allows up to 50 percent of the required parking spaces to be compact in size. So, while that code also requires a standard space to be dedicated to each unit, with three compact spaces and three standard spaces, the project is compliant with that portion of the code. As I mentioned, adequate curb length would remain between the new driveway and the single-family dwelling to the north to continue to maintain that existing on-street parking space. And then, the actual structural onsite constraints really have more to do with the driveway aisle width, and that's the constraints posed by the retaining wall at the south-side property line and required shoring to that property to the south. And the other interesting thing is the building code requires that one of the standard-sized spaces be handicap accessible, due to the fact that it's four dwelling units. So, our code does not allow handicap spaces to be dedicated for use by any single unit. So, there are, there is a standard-sized space provided, it just cannot be dedicated to any unit. In regards to the grading review, the proposed grading is the minimum required to provide those six onsite covered parking spaces, so, due to the depth of that parking garage area, it's kind of driving the entire grading plan. The plan mostly avoids large exposed retaining walls, except for, as I mentioned, that wall along the driveway aisle to the south-side property line, which would not be very visible from off-site. In terms of tree removal, we discussed the trees that will be removed from the property, which don't rise to the level of protected trees under our code. And then, again, the street tree to be removed from the street would be replaced per the conditions of approval. And lastly, the requested fence exception, this is actually something that was incorporated into the project design as a result of prior applications approved by the commission over the years. So, in terms of approving it, we have to find it's necessary to protect and screen, or that it's necessary, and that finding can be met. It's screening the adjacent single-family home from noise and fumes from the covered parking, as well as making the view a little bit more attractive. Given the proposed distance from the street and driveways, the fence would not impact site distance for cars coming onto or leaving the site. In terms of the proposed materials, they're proposing a solid redwood fence, and this would complement the wood siding of the proposed structure on the site. It's also consistent with the design of the existing solid wood fence along that shared lot line. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of the project by adoption of the draft resolution and subject to the findings and conditions of approval contained therein, and I will take any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Sayasan, would you like to start? Do you have any questions of staff?
No, I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Patel?
I was just noticing-
Oh. Did you put your mic on?
I think I do now. I was just noticing on the draft of the parking spaces, did you, I'm a little bit confused. Is it the 50 percent mean that there's going to be two compact cars, two?
Go back to that part of the plan.
So, what I see is there are two 8 by 16 and two 9 by 18.
Well, the handicap spot at the rear is 9 by 18 as well. So, you have two 9 by 18 at the front.
Okay.
I'm sorry. That's three, 9 by 18 at the front, and then, two 8 by 16, and then, right next to that is the handicap spot, which is 9 by 18. So, standard size, but again, dedicated for accessible use.
Okay, and so, then, the variance, or what we would be approving is the two 8 by 16s?
Just one of the 8 by 16s.
Because one of the 8 by 16s is approved, is allowed under the code as the 50 percent-
Right. It's this weird kind of conflict where they are compliant in that the total number of spaces, no more than 50 percent, are compact, but our code also requires that each residential dwelling unit have one dedicated standard space that's just for that unit, and they're not complying with that. They're asking to provide a compact space for one of those units.
Got it.
It's two parts of the code that don't really talk well to each other.
Got it. So, technically, there'd be four regular parking spots, and if there was additional, at least half of them would have to be compact or something like that. Okay, got it. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Gomez, any questions?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Gooding?
This may be a question for the applicant rather than you guys, but how is, are these spaces going to be dedicated under the purchase deeds by the owners?
So, typically, per the CCNRs, this is a condo development. We didn't provide CCNRs to you. Those will be, they're required as a condition of approval, but that would be shown in the condo plan, and they would be deeded via those documents.
As just one, one per unit, or does one unit get an extra one?
So, four of the spaces, each one would be dedicated to one unit in the condo plan. The other two would not be dedicated to any particular unit, they'd be common use.
In driving by the site, there's one pretty large stately tree right in the front. Is that the one that's going? When a replacement is required, is there any, are there any guidelines other than the city engineer's discretion as to how big and how mature and, you know, how well-grown?
The city engineer has a list of approved street trees. It's pretty extensive. I don't know that there's a standard for the size of those replacement trees. I think in the past, the commission has made recommendations for the city engineer to consider, so if the recommendation could be that he require a larger size tree to be planted, you could include that in your recommendations.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question regarding the podium parking. Is there anything within code, or is it purely the aesthetics of the architect that chose to have it open on the north side?
Well, I might let the applicant address the design question. I would imagine it's due to their desire to not exceed the floor area ratio by leaving it open.
Okay.
Well-
All right. Thank you.
Sounds like they have a response.
Right. We'll address it with the applicant. All right. At this time, then, we'll open the public hearing, and I assume the applicant is here. If you would like to address the commission, please step to the podium if you kindly identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Steve Johnson. I'm the contractor and owner of 661 San Bruno Avenue.
So, would you be able to address the question on the parking, why the one side on the north is open?
We need the room, the space, turning radius, and whatever else.
But that's not the drive-in side, and apparently, from what I read, the concern was with the neighbor on the north side, that that's open and there could be noise and fumes.
Yes.
Any other questions, Commissioner Sayasan?
Well, just to follow up on what you're saying, so, so then, if there is an issue with potential noise and fumes, so you're saying that that can't be closed, then?
Well, the fence was to provide more of a barrier, more of a solid barrier there. And that was, that actually came about back when we submitted years ago, and I believe Dennis is here tonight, but it was, you know, he's the neighbor on the north side, and he had asked about having something, you know, that looks a little better, that would kind of maybe cut off the, you know, possibly the sound and, you know, and any fumes, and I just, I agreed to, you know, put whatever he wanted to put there. That's kind of-
Okay, just to clarify, and maybe we're not understanding. I think you have the same question I do. If that's not the area where you're driving in, why is that not a solid wall?
I believe we need the space. Yes, Charlie?
The width across the lot, across the lot, we needed that extra space.
Okay, I think I'm missing something. Anyone else want to take a try?
It's basically the width of the lot.
Right.
If there was something solid there, it would, you know, it would come out a little further into the garage area.
Maybe I, can I try to, can I give it a try?
Sure, yes.
Looking at the, at the site plan, the purple line there, as I understood it, was the envelope of at least the second and third stories, correct? But so, are you telling us, are you saying that the purple line here is not the limit line of where cars can pull into, when they pull into the parking space?
It is the limit line, I believe. Actually, this may be a better question for my civil engineer, who I brought with me tonight.
Sure. I think that's the issue, is how close these cars-
My name is Charles Kavanaugh, Kavanaugh Engineering, and yeah, there used to be a wall there, but the width of the lot was defined, and by the time we had the wall on the, I'll say, the south line, and the setback from the north line, there wasn't enough parking, enough width to get the parking and the backup space in there. So, that wall along the north of the building was taken out to give another eight inches, and I think that's where one of the, one of the variances is for a width, parking width. There, I think we're within four inches of what's required, and that's as close as we could get, because we're limited there. And I'm honored to bring up one other item, if I might now, or should, would it be a separate?
If we could just wait, because I don't think I still understand. If the, when we're looking at the first floor plan with the parking spaces, is there a low wall, say, at the far end, when you pull in that space? Is there a low wall? Because then, above it, it looks like it's all open.
Yeah, above it's open, and I don't know, the architect may, I don't know if there's going to be bumpers, they usually put parking bumpers.
Okay, so what-
They would put parking bumpers, but then, the car nose can extend a little beyond.
Right. What we're asking is why the area above is open? Yes.
So, well, I was going to respond to what's going on at the north side extent of the parking area.
Yes.
I'm not sure if I'm really catching on to the, okay. There will be a metal guardrail, so that's called out in detail.
Yeah, there's a guardrail.
It's kind of hard to see, but-
I see, I see it on the plan.
Yeah. So, the car can just, it wouldn't stop right about there.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So, it's essentially, it is essentially covered, maybe the, maybe the, you know, the last six inches, maybe, but that needed that nose of the car in order to make your width requirement.
I still, I don't know if I'm not being clear. It appears on the photograph that there is the lower area with the cars, and above it, it's all open.
Just the walkway, yeah, above that railing is a walkway that's going alongside of the building. Yeah, and there's no roof over that.
Okay, because it says, on the north elevation, it says, "Open to Garage." So, what I took from that is that that entire space, those are columns-
Yes.
-supporting the upper floors, but that those are all open walls.
Yes.
It's all open.
That's correct.
And so, what I was asking is, is there a reason why that's open in that, putting that eight-foot fence to minimize noise and any kind of fumes? I just wonder why that choice was to leave that open, because certainly, if that was a wall-
Can I?
Yes.
Now, I understand what you're asking.
Yes.
So, there's a five-foot side setback.
Yes.
By having it open-
Yes.
-the cars can extend, there's no wall.
Right.
They can extend a little bit into the side setback without triggering our setback requirements-
Okay.
-because there's a parking space on grade.
Okay.
Do we solve?
Okay. Got it. That's clear. Thank you very, very much for that clarification. Okay. Anyone else from the applicant like to?
There's kind of a minor technicality in the staff report, appearing on page G 1.16, item number six therein. This is part of attachment one. It tells, "The applicant shall complete the tentative parcel map application and apply for a final map waiver per municipal code such and such." Well, the, I'm the civil engineer who prepared the tentative parcel map, and it's been reviewed, and as far as I know, it's been approved already, or not, haven't gotten the word back yet from the- Or not, haven't gotten the word back yet from the, the licensed land surveyor reviewing it, but, but I talked to her and got her last comments and, and she, she said that whatever comments they had could be handled as part of the final parcel map. So, so it's, it's essentially approved, but the formality hasn't happened yet. But, but the thing about apply for a final map waiver is, is, is not, not right. Once you have a tentative map, you've got to do a final map. And, and, and we went through that early in the process where we could have applied for a parcel map waiver. But I argued that the, the, the site is part of an old 1908 map, which has some, you know, some errors in it. Those old guys were using logarithms and calculating. It was difficult to get an accurate whole block. And, and that whole block had some errors in it. I studied the streets around it and, and just behind us is a, is a subdivision that was done, I think in the eighties. And, and they use the same monuments out in the, in the street of San Bruno that I'm using. So I feel pretty confident that, that I'm going to end up with, with where they are. But what it did is, is it shorted my client's property by about two and a half feet so that his property is not per the original 1908 map, which is the only reason you could get a variance for a parcel map. If, you know, if, if the site already is defined by a map on record, then you don't need another parcel map. But here, the site is, is not per the original map, so we, we are doing a, a final parcel map.
Okay, before you depart, would you like staff to address that, please?
So as we kind of briefly mentioned in the staff report, an application was submitted for a tentative parcel map. It is currently incomplete. It does require planning commission action under our subdivision ordinance. Yes, so that will occur at a subsequent hearing, public hearing. And we'll address the, whether or not the applicant wants to waive the final map or not. It's up to the applicant. We can.
Well, I'm saying that in my experience of forty years of doing subdivision work, once you do a tentative map, you got to do a final map.
Any other questions from the commissioners for the applicant? No? Okay, I have a slip from Mr. Dennis Bussie. You're up, please Dennis.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. I, I have two issues I'd like to bring up tonight, both regarding safety. What you just discussed about no wall on the north side. My concern, if you look at page A2, you can bring that up. It's in regards to the parking.
So it's the top floor.
Six stalls. Oh, and I should clarify, on the property on the north side. And in looking at this, what I'm concerned about, as we hear it all the time, somebody hits the brake instead of the gas and vice versa and goes through a store. And I see here on the diagram, and I don't know how to read this construction stuff, but it says wheel stops. That's not adequate. I'm sure we all see wheel stops in shopping centers and they're busted, they're on angles and they're easy to jump over. So my question is, shouldn't there be bollards? Which were the steel pipe that's in the ground? That would prevent an accident where a car could shoot through the fence and into my garage. So I think that's a safety issue because there is no wall to help there stop a car from going through it. So also there's the electrical panel to the left of stall one and the water heaters. And I don't see any bollards there either. In case someone at night or with half a heat on doesn't make the turn, it takes out the electric panel and/or water heaters or furnace. So that is my concern, that I think bollards should be, if not necessary in all of them. I don't know where this retaining wall is, but certainly on the first two. And my other issue, should I wait till later? It's in regards to the sewer.
No, may I ask you to clarify if you could what you would picture as these bollards?
I'm sorry, I don't hear well.
I'm sorry, would you clarify for us what you would picture as the bollards?
What I would picture?
Picture them as, for instance, sometimes we see where there's a bent piece of metal. It can be pipes. What are you suggesting would be appropriate?
Well, that's a good point. Something on here says metal guard rail. What is that? Above stall one, two, three, stall four, parking stall four. You see where it says metal guard rail? What is that purpose? Is that supposed to stop a car from going through? Or is it some kind of a handrail for the staircase on the other side? So that's the question I have, what's the guard rail? And again, the bollards are backup safety because someone's going to jump that wheel stop. There's no if, ands, or buts, it happens all the time. In fact, you know Ron Davis's Bat House? It used to be a barber shop. I got my hair cut there for years and years and years. One night, some guy with a heat on in his truck drove right into the building. It would have killed anyone in it. This was at night and how the cops caught him was he left, he took a hike. He left a trail of debris along, I guess Alvarado and they finally caught up to him on Old Bay Shore. And I've told Ron Davis that he's got people sitting there having coffee. There should be bollards, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, definitely in front of that. It's on a T-intersection. Did that answer your question?
Yes, before you go on, staff, could you clarify the guard rail? Because I believe you did mention there's metal guard rail there.
Yes, so the metal guard rail, there's a label that's adjacent to space four, but it actually runs all the way through all of the parking spots on, on the north side. So, and I think the architect is here and he can maybe speak to the, what it's going to be constructed to withstand, but our understanding is that the guard rail is there specifically to stop a car.
It is, it's like you'd see on a freeway, on a curve.
It may not, it look exactly like a highway guard rail, but we'll let the architect address that.
My name is Hector. I am representing the design of the building. And then the answer is the guard rail is supposed to be the guards for the, you know, the steps going up.
Okay, which is this wide?
It is forty-two inches.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So it's pretty substantial.
Yeah. And then your concern about the.
Yeah, the wheel chocks.
Yeah, we have a wheel garden right here. And then the bollard you're talking about with the gas is right here. It's not only within the parking.
Here's two water heaters and here's an electrical panel. What if somebody backs into it?
Well, it pretty much enclose in here, of course.
Okay. All right, just thought I'd point it out.
Okay.
Don't drink and drive and you won't have to worry about it.
Thank you. Dennis, did you have more? You said something else.
I'm sorry, I.
You had another point?
I'm old, I don't hear well. And by the way, I'm not pointing at anybody. I had an ejection in this finger today, so I've got to keep it mobile, so I'm not pointing at you. And I'm sorry, your question?
Oh, you, you indicated that you had something else you wanted to bring up regarding?
The next one's critical, I think. And if Julia could bring up the photograph, an aerial photograph, it's G 125. It's a Google Earth shot. It will help to explain it. This is the last subject I have, just the two, two subjects. Oh, we're getting hot, that's it. Okay, it's the, the uphill, the top line, it's facing a different direction up to what I'm looking at here. But at any rate, you see the long line and it says 637, that's my property. Well, there's a sewer that's been there since 1948. It's an easement that goes all along that yellow line and above all those homes on Tulari Street were connected to this pipe back in 1948. And if you go to the next, probably the next slide, Julia, would be G 130. Again, it's a photograph, two photographs. There you go. To give you perspective, the house on the left, the top photograph, the house on the left is mine. The house on the right is the applicant's wanting to build a new building. But see all those homes up that steep hill? Well, years ago, that hillside, raw sewage popped out of the hillside, flooded my property to the point it was flowing out my garage door. And it flowed all the way down San Bruno. I'm talking a river. I cry a river, but it trickled, but it nonstop. It went all the way down San Bruno, across Santa Clara, all the way down the next block to Alvarado and across the street from the Catholic Church is the first drain. And that sewage ran down there. Anyway, I couldn't get anywhere with the city. I went to the building, or the Board of Health in San Mateo, finally got somebody off their butt. And then Clay Holstein himself took control and he ordered a robot. This is all somewhere in the city hall. Clay Holstein had a meeting with the property owners up on Tulari, who never knew they were on a sewer pipe that came downhill. So what happened years ago, and it's still very common in Brisbane, there still are places like this. People up top didn't have a sewer to hook into in their street. So they'd go to your neighbor across the street, they'll give you a bottle of booze if you let me tap into your sewer. And it's very common, as anybody that's been in Brisbane knows. In fact, there's six houses I know of on Sierra Point that are on one pipe. So consequently, Clay ordered a robot to go up the pipe from the sidewalk. And the robot, they would have all the homeowners together to see it at city hall. And the robot went up the pipe and it just branched there, then it branched there, branched there. Pipe was busted, there were roots the robot couldn't get through. So they came up with an estimate, there were at least seven to nine houses that they could verify on that one pipe. So I'll shut up long enough to say, now is the time. If you go to the next, Julia, the next G 143. You see a picture's worth a thousand words, so if I'm not explaining it, the picture might help. And as I was told by Doug Ryder, who's the head, I don't know what Doug's title is, but he's the head engineer, construction guy. He said anytime up above, they have to do something that requires a permit or whatever, they would have to cook, hook up to the sewer that now exists on Tulari. G 143. Okay, that'll do it right there. If you look at the top horizontal line, that is where the sewer goes. It's at a three-foot easement between my fence and the adjoining property. So that sewer pipe was put in in 1948. It says right here on your notes. In 1948, the variance was given. And so consequently, that pipe has got to be vanished. And granted, it's on an easement, there's no responsibility, the Johnsons. But I think now is the time that would have to be inspected because the bulldozers are there, the guys with the shovels, et cetera. And the last thing I'll show is G 444, please? G, oh, I'm sorry, G 144. It'll be a similar photograph. But you can see that the horizontal top line is the sewer and then it branches to the right, starts uphill, which is a steep hill. Well, now the applicant's going to put another brand-new sewer pipe right along the old wood. So the construction crews are there. I think now is the time that they have to look at the pipe and it's got to be replaced because there's no way it meets any kind of code today. And it's not really, I don't think, an usual request because all the manpower's there and the bulldozer's and equipment. And furthermore, that would give peace of mind to everyone uphill as well as me down below. And the last thing, on the right-hand side are some notes. CS hyphen three, it's the second paragraph, sanitary sewer. And the last line of that paragraph says clean outs to be in Christie benign box. So my question is, what is a Christie benign box and where is it on the diagram? And with that, I'll shut up, but I do think it's an issue that needs to be addressed. I personally, and I'm requesting this of the city, I would like an update as to how many houses are still on it because this happened, I don't know how many years ago. But there could still be half a dozen homes on that original sewer pipe if they haven't done any remodeling. And it was a real tragedy because some of the people up above at the meeting had no idea where. Because I would never think where the heck does my sewer go? And that's it. I thank you for your time and I think the sewer's an important issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Staff, would you like to address that by chance?
I'm happy to, but I think the applicant has already addressed that portion if they would. Yeah.
Yeah, so from the get-go, I've had every intention of replacing the sewer line. I mean, as Mr. Bussie said, it's easy to do it at that time. We'll have equipment out there. I mean, it's to my benefit too. Obviously, everything on my property, I don't know exactly where it goes beyond my property. And also, if my recollection serves me well, there's, there's less houses on that system now. I think they did some retrofitting up there and I think that, from what I remember, I think there's, might be three houses left on that, on that system. There's no longer seven or eight. So there's only a few houses, but nevertheless, it should be addressed and I'll address it.
Okay, thank you very much. Dennis, you had another comment?
I just thought too, the other critical thing, and thanks Johnson, I know he doesn't know where the pipe goes either. Nobody does. But once Johnson's finished with this project, those pipes are going to be underneath concrete staircases. So if it ever did overflow again, it seeped through as it did before, it's going to be major to jackhammer all that concrete out. So it's all a bore reason to check it out. Thank you.
Thank you. I do seem to remember something going on in Tulari some years back and there were a lot of houses all connected in that area and they did divest some of them. Don't quote me on it, but I, I remember hearing about it. Because it was as, as Mr. Bussie has so aptly described. It was a major event for people on that street. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this project? No? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. Okay, discussion? Okay, discussion commissioners, who would like to start? Gomez?
I don't have anything. I think we've had discussion around the parking. I think that could be expanded on ad nauseam. But I think with the applicant design and what we've talked about thus far, like, I feel confident that it's been addressed. I can echo the concerns around the trees. But if we've got plans to replace the, you know, replace the trees, I think that's within respect to the code, that's the, you know, that's the best we can do under consideration. I can't really find anything else that I'm hung up about with this particular design. I know it's been in the works for some time. And it seems like the applicant is working with the city as a partner. I think the staff has analyzed this at length. So I don't have any other concerns to discuss at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Gooding.
Just to follow up on Mr. Bussie's concern about the safety issue of the cars parking there. Is there any way to get a neat sort of comfort level as to the structural integrity of the proposed guardrail? Is it, might it be enough? It sounded to me like it was more of a handrail for the walkway than a safety prevention for automobiles. But I don't have enough information to know.
If I threw the chair. The director was just suggesting that you modify the resolution to add that as a condition of approval, whether it's the guardrail or an alternative structurally capable method of ensuring that cars would not move past the building wall in any way. You can just add that as a general condition and then the applicant can work with the building official to determine what the best code-compliant way would be.
That's the only comment I have.
Commissioner Siasan?
I don't have any other questions.
Commissioner Patel?
My initial concern was about the parking, whether parking was going to be impacted on the street. But based on the presentation, it seems as though there's not going to be any impact on street parking. Also, I think we're going to address the safety issue as it relates to parking by making a modification, so I'm good to go.
Thank you. So I have a question for staff with regard to the sewer dilemma. Is there, would you recommend, or is there a way we could put that in as a condition that that must be remedied? There must be some sort of a meeting with the neighbors, with the city engineer? Or should we just leave this up to the city engineer?
I think you can structure it as an advisory condition that, based on the testimony heard, the applicant has agreed to work with the city to replace the line subject to the city's specifications and not getting into prescribing the actual details of that because we don't know the details at this point. And it's then memorialized in the conditions and it gives the applicant the opportunity to work with the city to figure out the actual details later.
Anyone else going once, going twice? Okay, so it looks like we have a condition that would require a guardrail with specifications adequate to retain a car from going through the north side of the parking garage onto the neighbor's property. And that we also recommend city engineer facilitate a meeting with adjacent property owners regarding replacement of the sewer line to San Bruno Avenue. So with that in mind, could we have a motion for approval? Or are we done with all discussion? I'll entertain a motion for approval of use permit UP 3-18.
I will move that we approve the application with the conditions that you just stated.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Motion passes. Thank you very much to the applicant as well. Okay, moving on, we have a public hearing. This is for 221 Tularay Street. Could we have a staff report, please?
So the application before you this evening is for a design permit and grading review to allow construction of a new three-unit condominium building at 221 Tularay Street. The existing site is occupied by a single-family dwelling. So here's a few site photos to show the existing conditions. As you can see, and probably noticed on your site visit, there is no curb cut for this property. So there is no onsite parking currently provided for the single-family home. Additionally, it's not very easy or apparent to tell from the street, but the right-of-way for Tularay Street, which is actually 50 feet wide, it is not fully paved. So the front property line of this property, as well as most of the other properties along that side of the street, is about 17 feet away beyond the paved edge of the road. So, for example, those stairs that are accessing the existing home are technically in the public right-of-way. You can also see in these photos, very clearly, one of the proposed trees to be removed that are in the public right-of-way, which is the pine tree that's kind of dominating that left side of what appears to be the front yard of this home, but again, is the public right-of-way. And just beyond that is a eucalyptus tree that's also proposed to be removed. So here's a summary of the proposed project in relation to the standards of the R3 residential district. So that, this portion of Tularay Street is zoned R3. It's a little, a little bit of an oddity in our zoning map, but the R3 district does extend about halfway or a third up Tularay Street. So these are subject to the R3 district standards. The lot itself is about 6,400 square feet, so fairly large lot, very steeply sloped at about 41%. The proposed project would comply with all of the objective standards of the R3 district as well as all of the special requirements we have for condominium developments. So here's the proposed site plan. So as you can see, the, a key detail of the development proposal is to actually create a curb cut where there is currently none. The applicant here is proposing a fairly wide, about 31-foot-wide driveway in the public right-of-way, and as well as an improved public parking space. So if we'll go back quickly to the photos, you can see that that side of the street is currently striped for parking in the public right-of-way. It's not quite sufficient to qualify as three spaces under our code, but I bet you would see three cars parked there. But technically, there's two existing parking spaces there. So the proposed driveway and other public right-of-way improvements would preserve one public parking spot, improved to city standards. So the general outline of this building is apparent from the site plan. It's separated into two wings. So basically, leaving an open kind of courtyard area within the middle of the lot, maintaining the minimum five-foot required setbacks to the side lot lines and a fairly generous 20-foot rear setback. So at the first level would be a six-car garage. So the car, or the garage would accommodate mechanical lifts. So it's three cars wide, but two cars tall. Under our code, we don't specifically address mechanical lifts and how they qualify for parking, but I think our interpretation has been that as long as the lifts meet the minimum width dimensions, you know, they count as tandem spaces because one has to be moved in order for the other to be accessed. So what this means for this project is, while there are, there's adequate room for additional off-street parking in the driveway, we can't give them credit for those spaces since we don't allow more than two cars to be parked in tandem. That doesn't mean it would not be used, though, as de facto guest parking in the driveway. So at this first level would also be the front entry as well as storage areas and trash and recycling. And then at the second level would be the first unit, unit number one, which would also have a fairly large balcony extending over the flush with the garage. And then at the, oops. At the third level would be the two larger units. And that's where the building, again, separates out into that kind of wing style. So the ground levels of both those units at the third floor, and then at the fourth floor, the upper levels of those two units, both of which would have exterior connections to the rear landscaped open area. And you can see in the third floor plan, the two private terraces that would be accessed from those first levels of units two and three. And those would be separated by, you know, retaining walls, screened with landscaping, et cetera, to provide some privacy and separation for those two private outdoor spaces. So moving on, I've provided an excerpt from the project plans. So the site section shows that while in appearance, this structure really reads as a two-story building, it actually is, you know, four levels. So the applicant's proposed a stepped design that really moves upward. Each level kind of is stepped back and terraced with the slope of the property. So that's nicely illustrated there in that section. And in terms of exterior materials and colors, again, we're keeping with a kind of organic, neutral palette. We've provided some digital representation of the colors that was included in your packet. And the applicant also brought a physical materials board that he can distribute to you all during the public hearing. So essentially, the structure would be clad in cement board shiplap siding with some stucco accents at the retaining walls and cedar soffits at the roof lines. So again, from the south, adjoining a single-family dwelling, two-story single-family dwelling at 223 Tularay, the south elevation would again read as a two-story structure due to that step design moving upward as the hillside. And here's a visualization of the model, and we actually have the model here. And I might ask the applicant to also hand that to you at the public hearing so you can see it for yourself. And lastly, a quick look at the conceptual landscape plan that was submitted. So applicants proposed more than the minimum required landscaping. There's a lot of landscaping proposed in the public right-of-way in addition to those exterior stairs. And of course, that, anything in the public right-of-way would be subject to city engineer approval. But we think they provided a pretty good palette of shrubs and ground covers and flowering perennials there to be a nice attractive improvement in the public right-of-way. And moving on to new trees on site. So one tree would be removed from the property that would not qualify as being protected due to its size and species. So one tree would be removed. The applicant's proposed seven new trees. All of the proposed species are low-water use, native or non-invasive, as consistent with our guidelines. And of course, as always, at building permit level, the final landscape plan would need to demonstrate compliance with our water conservation and landscaping ordinance. So touching on the required findings for the design permit. In regards to neighborhood compatibility, the step design of the structure really helps minimize its perceived bulk and mass. So it's really stepping up the hillside, reducing the perceived scale. It's fairly consistent with the development pattern in the neighborhood, which is not uncommon to see two, three-story homes on these steeply sloped lots. It's also incorporated, you know, minimum setbacks at the sides, really generous setbacks at the rear. And stepping back the second, third, and fourth levels from each other really helps reduce the impacts, potential impacts to light and air at adjoining properties. It's not located on a mapped ridge line, so we're not looking at view concerns here. In regards to the building design form and details, so this is a pretty unique and distinctive architectural design. It's really mimicking the natural topography of the site. The proposed color palette, again, will really help it kind of not fade into the background, but at least be complementary to the surrounding hillside and natural areas. We've got a mix of exterior finish and materials that are, again, complementary and add some interesting perspectives. The private and shared outdoor spaces are designed to provide and protect resident privacy as well as neighboring privacy, just due to, again, the courtyard location. So those residents are not exposed to the neighboring properties or vice versa and are separated from each other as well. In regards to site access and circulation, so again, a big part of this project is that new driveway curb cut. So cars would enter and exit onto Tularay. We do not have back turnaround requirements that apply to Tularay Street. So cars are not required to turn around onsite, they would be backing up. And it, again, the proposed driveway would eliminate one of the street spaces along the front edge, but would retain and improve an existing space. And the proposed landscaping, again, it's in excess of the minimum required. The street trees that are proposed to be removed, which, I'll go back to the photos. You know, they're pretty mature, they have a pretty large canopy. I think in any other context, I think it would be a no-brainer for staff to recommend one-to-one replacement. In this case, the improvements that the applicant is making to the property in terms of accessing the property, improving the on-street parking, you know, we're not recommending at this time, it's up to commission consideration, of course, that they be replaced just due to the lack of area for them actually to be replaced in the vicinity of this project. The neighborhood is pretty wooded. There's a lot of other conditions that are detailed in the staff report as to why we're not recommending at this time. But again, that is up to commission discussion. In regards to the grading review, if I can skip to that. So the grading plan does propose the minimum grading necessary to accommodate all onsite parking. I think it's a common theme with grading applications you guys see on hillside lots. It's almost always driven by parking and site access on these steep properties. The step design actually minimizes the grading for the building pads at the upper floors. So the design itself, in terms of architectural design, really minimizes the required grading. The plan also avoids large exposed retaining walls. So there are two walls that would be exposed at the, sorry. So you can kind of see here in the landscape plan. So that would be the northwestern corner, not very visible from the street. But again, I think it's, we've recommended conditions of approval that would allow either changes in materials or textures to break up the massing of that wall or vegetation, either option seems like it could be appropriate for those few walls. Again, the removal of the two street trees required as they're proximate to the proposed structure and driveway, basically within the footprint, considering the amount of trees proposed to be planted on the property, of which many are, you know, either species of oak or other native species. And the existing trees remaining in the neighborhood, we're not recommending replacement in our report. And this is not located within the San Bruno Mountain area Habitat Conservation Plan area, so we're not looking at conflicts with that. So with that, we're recommending conditional approval of the project subject to the financing conditions of approval contained in Exhibit A to the resolution. And I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Gooding, would you like to start? Do you have questions?
Only one, really, which is about the mechanical lifts. This is the first I've seen of them. Is there any issue with these things creating any noise for neighboring units? Are they pretty quiet or are they potentially a neighborhood issue?
Sure. So, because it's design permit level, I didn't ask for specs on the specific type of lift, but I believe the applicant has identified the brand, and he can probably speak to the... Yeah. So at the public hearing, he can address that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Gomez?
No, I don't have any questions at the time.
Commissioner Patel?
Can you please explain to me what improved street parking means? What does that... I don't exactly understand.
Sure. So what we currently have... Let me get back to the photo. So right now, the parking... Well, in front of this property, it may actually meet the city engineer's requirements. But when the applicant submits his design for the actual improvement of the driveway, any of his improvements that are happening in the public right-of-way, the city engineer would basically dictate the dimensions, the design, anything for this public parking spot that they'll basically be improving, modifying, I guess. Modifying is a good alternative word. So yeah, by improvement, I just mean that it'll be designed to the city engineer's specs and standards to be, you know, safe and functional per our code.
And based on this design, one of the parking spots would go away?
So like I said earlier, I think you would probably be able to see two small cars parked in the space. That's not fully shown, but before the Prius, I bet you could fit two small cars. But our zoning ordinance says that to be legally recognized as a street spot, it has to be at least forty feet in depth. I'm sorry, twenty feet in depth. So they're not quite hitting those dimensions to be considered three spaces under our code. But again, that doesn't mean that if you wanted to, you could park three cars there. Is that clear?
So right now, in front of the house, you can park three cars there. But under the new design, you could only park two cars there?
No, it would be one spot. Yeah, so there's two legal spaces. It will result in one legal space. You're having a net reduction of one legal space per the way our code defines it.
So that would be just... I mean...
It's an issue of practicality versus what our code says. So if I was going to say, analyze this from a dimensional standpoint, there's only two legal spaces there.
Got it. And one of those would go away?
Right.
Would that basically be like the city's giving that space away for the people in that neighborhood?
That's a way you could characterize it. I think in general, the city engineer has had to make that judgment call for properties that, similar to this one, I can think of right now, 670 Sierra Point, which may have been considered in the fall before some of you, I don't recall. But similar situation where you had the right-of-way, the paved roadway was not the full width of the right-of-way. You had a property whose property line was set back fairly far. So while people were enjoying parking and public parking on a lot with no curb cut, that lot had no curb cut. So to improve a property and provide site access, I think that's how the city engineer has weighed those decisions in the past, is how the value of the street parking versus the fact that site access has to be provided.
And there is kind of a trade-off, too, because right now, the current residents don't have any on-site parking. So, you know, this project will provide quite an improvement in terms of on-site parking available. So you may lose the space on the street, but will that future residents... I mean, there's more opportunity for on-site parking than currently exists for the current residents. So it is kind of a trade-off situation.
So are we also giving them a wider curb cut than is standard?
They are requesting a thirty-one-foot curb cut, where eighteen-foot is the typical max. And that's due to the width of the three-car width of that garage, so they have to fit five spaces. There are other ways it could be accommodated, like by flipping it, but that would really increase the grading. And I think the applicant can probably take you through his... The iterations he went through trying to figure out how to fit the required parking on that site. But I'm guessing that was why it really reduces the grading to have the three-car width. But again, then that means the curb cut has to be wider since it's three cars wide.
And if it was eighteen feet, would that preserve the two spots that are in front of the house?
It would still limit, let's see. The frontage... Is it a fifty-six-foot frontage? Well...
Excuse me. There may be people at home watching. Why don't we hold that until... Yeah, let's hold that.
Well, we'll follow that up with the applicant at the public hearing.
Right. We'll have you elaborate. Any further questions?
No.
Nope. Okay. Commissioner Sayson?
No, I'll wait to ask the applicant.
Okay. I have one question for staff. On the aerial map, which is your Page G 2.31, it shows the yellow outline of 221. The staff report mentions an undeveloped parcel 219. Is that the unmarked parcel to the left?
Yes.
And is that a substandard width lot?
It is. It's actually a legal lot. And two years... No, a year and a half ago, the commission approved grading for a single-family home on that lot. So it's a legal lot, but it is twenty-five feet, I think, or thirty, thirty, thirty feet wide.
All right. Thank you. All right. At this time, then, we'll open the public hearing. If the applicant would like to step to the podium, please state your name.
Good evening. I'm Fred Herring. I'm the project architect. Let me go right to the parking. The parking arrangements are the result of a series of conversations with the city engineer. And where that arrow is, that's the edge of the current street. So that the parking, we're talking about existing parking, is out in the public street now. So at that point, Tulare is a one relatively narrow lane-wide traveled way with a very narrow parking strip, seven and a half foot wide, where those two cars that Julie is talking about are. The idea... Sorry. Oh, well, okay, thank you. The idea of moving those spaces and moving the public parking that we provide, that's still in the public right-of-way, but is into the hill that you would have seen in the photograph. So they're kind of moved, it's moved laterally from where those existing spaces are. The city's engineer's idea being that this will finally give you a place where two people could pass in the street, that the full twenty-one foot that's already there now would accommodate traffic. Rather than being one lane, it would become two for this width, so people could go back and forth. Follow what I mean? Yeah. As for the design in general, you can see it's really driven by both the very steep side and my desire to have a lot of privacy between the individual units and between the neighbors. Those interior courtyards that are offset, they're offset so that if I'm in the unit on this side and I'm in my exterior terrace, I'm not looking in my neighbor's windows. I'm looking at a solid piece of the neighbor and vice versa when I'm on the other side. It's always, using that U-shaped building allows a designer a lot of freedom to give privacy to the individual units. And if you had any specific questions about it, I'd be happy to answer them.
Would you be willing to turn that model?
I would.
So that we could see the north side of the house?
And through the chair, there was a question about the lifts as well.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Let's start with that.
The lifts came about primarily because soon after... My office is on El Camino in San Carlos. And very soon after I moved into that space, there's an alley in the back, and my parking is behind my building. Well, a lot immediately on the other side of the alley became a six-unit condominium. And within that six-unit condominium were these lifts. And I thought, what a very good way to accommodate the parking. So I've now had a firsthand experience of seeing what it's like, and do the people really use them, and so on. And it's been uniformly positive. They don't make any noise. They're completely quiet. And they get used. I mean, the residents do use them. So it isn't one space posing as two. They really will be used.
Do you have further questions on that?
No, I think that the noise issue is of concern to me only because it's new to me.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Right. I wouldn't have known if they hadn't built one in my backyard, so to speak.
If I go to my mechanic's place, his lift is really noisy.
Oh, okay.
I assume these are different.
Yeah. No, these are quiet.
Okay. I just wanted to ask you about that, the northern side of the house. Since we're typically dealing with these five-foot side setbacks...
Yes, this is.
And you have a generous amount of very large windows.
Yes.
Did you have any concern about windows looking into windows with that adjacent property? Particularly to the north side?
I had absolutely no concerns, because I'm the designer of the building to the north. So I had the model to know how the windows relate.
Okay.
That's...
Very good. Thank you. Makes sense. Okay, Commissioner Sayson, questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I had a question about the trees that will be removed and the ones that will be replacing them. So I'm looking at G 2.48, and...
Even before you go on, you can see that even at the time I built this model, I expected to save those trees. The trees came out of the plan when the arborist went out to write his report and told me, if you're going to dig a big hole right next to these trees, you're going to kill them anyway. And they're not in spectacularly good condition, but they're never going to survive the construction project. Better that you plant more trees and realize you can't save those.
So was that the reason why the new trees that will be planted at maturity? It states here that they won't get any taller than ten to twenty feet, as opposed to the like the...
Well, that's some on the front. Some of those bigger, I mean, oak trees are going to be a lot taller than that in the back.
Oh, okay. I do see. Which ones are those?
Well, I mean, I can't... I think there's probably... I'm guessing that T4 is a Quercus something, meaning an oak.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's...
Would you like me to...
Twenty feet is a kind of, no, it's my vision, not yours.
Well, I was going to suggest if you want me to read them and identify their location. So yes, T4 is a blue oak.
Twenty feet.
Yeah. T4 is a blue oak. T5 is a coast live oak. Height at maturity about twenty feet and about thirty feet wide in terms of canopy. And those are located... T5, there's two here. Or I'm sorry, am I getting those right? Yes, T5. And T4 is here. So that would be the blue oak on the south side. No. Yes, south side.
Okay, I was just a little concerned, because the trees that were being removed are currently as high as forty...
Oh, those are really big trees, yeah.
Okay.
As I say, you can see from the model that I started out with the trees in mind and was disabused of the idea that I could preserve them.
Okay. Commissioner Gomez?
Yeah, I had equal concern about the canopy. I'm a big fan of urban forestry.
Okay.
And I understand if you've already had an arborist look at the situation, and you're planting other species, I guess... The question I have is, and this is more of a technicality on the design standards with these landscape designs, is is it possible to bring in a more mature tree for these other seven? Or is it a certain design standard, like you have to get a fifteen-gallon, or that's the easiest thing on the market?
Fifteen-gallon is probably what I've specified.
Okay.
And it would be really difficult on this site to get a very big tree, like a box tree.
Okay.
I mean, the kind of crane it would take in Tulare, I don't think would go in Tulare, even after I've made it twenty-one genuine feet wide.
Got it.
Yeah, I don't think that's a practical possibility.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Patel?
I just, the property to the north of 221 Tulare, you said you were designing that one, too. Is there going to be an additional curb cut for parking on that side as well?
Yeah, there's a curb cut for the two-car garage on that side, yeah. But it's not a especially large one. It's not a multiple dwelling. It's a small, single-family dwelling. I don't remember the floor area, but it's on the order of fourteen or fifteen hundred feet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions come to mind? Thank you very much.
I think I'm...
Thank you. Anyone from the audience like to speak on this project? Please step forward. If you'd state your name, please.
My name is Faiyan. I live on, at 203, so on the south side of this property. I happen to have read a letter from the Prius owner of 203 to the city. In the letter, it said, there is a sewer that connects 201, 203, and 205 to their street. And the sewer was one of the reasons that 205 could not reduce grading. Like, my impression was that the grading would hurt the sewer. So I don't know if anyone happened to know, like, where that sewer is on the 201 side and whether this grading would hurt that sewer.
Maybe that's something we can look into.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Great. Staff?
Through the chair, could we have some... So as the property owner mentioned, yes, there is records in our property files of a shared private sewer line in that area. I mean, I think probably similarly to the last public hearing we just had. You know, obviously, this particular project will be looking at title report and that sort of thing to glean exactly where the easement would be specifically. I don't think it's yet been mapped, but... Right, but...
Could you... Do you want to step to the podium?
As far as I know, there is no recorded sewer easement. But as my neighbor has just said, if there's a sewer, whether there's an easement or not, we obviously need to accommodate what's already there. We can't very well cut off the neighbor's sewer when we make our excavation.
Right. And to my point being that, you know, this is a condominium project. The applicant has not submitted a parcel map application. They did submit a condo plan. But, you know, this applicant's indicated they want to apply to waive the parcel map, but we still have to look through a title report, which typically would show if there was any recorded easement. I think if we have whatever data we have in the property file, which the city engineer obviously would review, similarly to the last situation, I don't think it's unreasonable to expect a sewer line on this property that is shared with other properties to be upgraded as part of this project and not simply demolished. I don't know if that helps address the concerns, but...
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to address the commission? Seeing none, could we have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
And a second?
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? No. Okay. Discussion. Who would like to start? Commissioner Patel, you look like you're ready.
Sure. My concern is removing additional parking from Tulare Street. It's a very small street that has limited parking as it is. We're going to be approving a wider curb cut than is standard on this street. My additional concerns are that if we do approve a wider curb cut, how is it fair to other residents on Tulare Street to not allow a similar wide curb cut for their residences? It seemed as though, from the conversations that we've had, that a standard curb cut would potentially work if there was some sort of maneuvering of the parking for the structure. And it just seems like on this particular street, because of the lack of parking, because it is a narrow street, because there's a lack of access for the... parking, because it is a narrow street, because there's a lack of access for the community to park their vehicles in other locations, that it's a concern that I have.
So, if I may, just to address this, and, and I'm not saying this is the answer, but in our staff report, it says even an eighteen-foot curb cut would eliminate one of the standard-on-street parking spaces recognized. So if staff could address that, because your point's well taken, but we're saying even with the, the standard eighteen-foot max, we would be eliminating one spot. And that may be related to, in the same paragraph I just read from, it cites the, the slope being one of the problems with the layout and the garage.
So I just pulled up on the screen the boundary and topographic survey, which shows the existing striped parking on the street on Tulare. So you can see that the street, or, sorry, the southernmost on-street parking space would be eliminated due to, I wish I could flip quickly back, but that would be eliminated due to the driveway retaining walls, et cetera, completely. So it's this striped parking on the north side that actually, now that I look at it more closely, extends beyond the property line to the adjacent property at two nineteen Tulare that we're looking at. So, now that I'm looking at it with fresh eyes, I think it actually, the staff report could be wrong, as much as I hate to address that. So the, the two parking spaces, part of that extends over the adjacent property at two nineteen Tulare, so it's not related to the improvements at two twenty-one. Sorry for, hopefully that's clear, so.
So, here's the one, that would be up here, which is, we have the curb cut starting up here, and certainly, hopefully, it's in the line. What if it's over?
Sure, thank you. So I am pointing to the parking spot on the street at the southern extent of the property line, which would be eliminated due to the new driveway and retaining walls that are roughly in that location. The other one legally defined, but practically two-spot parking area on the north side overlaps over the property line with two nineteen Tulare here. So I think it's mischaracterizing the staff report as being, so we're really only eliminating for this particular property, one spot here, or no, I'm sorry, this is the spot that's being relocated, yeah, and this is the spot that's being minimized. In terms of the, and then in terms of the proposed development at two nineteen Tulare to the north, we don't have the project plans with us, but again, the architect is here. I don't know if Fred could speak to the location of that curb cut in relation to the on-street parking space that overlaps those two property lines.
Yeah. I, I think the, the significant, I mean, I, I can give you an idea, and it's only a bit this way, so it does eliminate a, a space that's up here, a second in that second batch. But the real point that I was trying to make before is, we're providing one that's off the current roadway. If we left the one that's on the current roadway, parallel with it, we'd be back to the same two spaces. It's just that the town's engineer will prefer to not have that space, to have a wider road. From my perspective, it's six of one and half a dozen of the other. If the commission would prefer to see there wind up with two spaces, just like there are two spaces now, that's acceptable to me, but I don't think the city engineer will like it as well as the way it's now shown, which is a result of my conversations with him. So, it works for me either way.
And sorry, I totally-
I don't want it to seem like I'm diminishing parking, when I really am widening a street.
And I missed Commissioner Patel's question entirely, in my trying to figure out what was showing on the screen. So the answer is, an eighteen-foot curb cut, you know, located roughly in the center of the site, as any structure would be located roughly in the center of the site, would remove or reduce the size of the on-street parking spaces, so even if it was just eighteen feet, rather than thirty-one feet, you'd still have ultimately a reduction in the on-street parking. That was what you were asking, right?
Right.
Sorry, it took me so long to get there.
But also, the fact that there was no curb cut there before, even a very standard driveway would be removing a parking space, because there was no curb cut previously. Okay?
Right.
Okay. Anyone else? Discussion?
No, well, yeah, I, I just wanted to comment on that, I think, I think I am persuaded by what the applicant was saying, that we are gating a wider road, I think, and also, their design is creating more parking space, whereas now, the current owners don't have designated parking, so they're probably parking on the street anyways, taking up street space that other cars would, would take up. So I think, I think overall, it benefits the owners, and I think the public in general in terms of the parking, so.
Well, in, in addition to providing the guest spaces, which before, the property owner was parking on the street most likely, and their guests, so. Anything else there? Commissioner Gomez?
No, I concur with the aforementioned points, I think widening the street is a benefit, and having the parking for the new residents is a big benefit, and while I'd love to see the big tree, you know, we've got a plan to put more trees on the site, so.
Commissioner Goody?
Yeah, I concur with Navarro about the tree issue, I, the more trees, the better, and I think this, I'm comforted by the fact that we're netting five more trees than there are currently, and if one of the departures is a eucalyptus, then godspeed. So I, I'm comfortable with the landscaping issue.
I have one minor technicality I wanted to just point out, under the conditions, I saw nothing related to the mechanical lifts, and since that is imperative to achieve the five required parking spaces, I would like that included in the conditions, just so that it's stated very clearly and unequivocally, otherwise, we end up with three parking spaces covered. Okay, so our permit, it looks like we have one additional language I just mentioned regarding the mechanical lifts, other than that, unless I'm missing something, it would stand as is? Any last-minute thoughts?
Are we going to put any language, as with the previous applicant about the sewer, that they're going to consult to make sure that-
Hmm, so that would be an advisement for the city engineer, to look into the sewer situation with the neighbors. So given that one condition and advice to the city engineer, I would entertain a motion for approval on permit DP two dash one eight.
I move to approve it.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have two seconds.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, we move on to items initiated by staff.
I just have two things, and maybe Julia might have one more, I think I'm forgetting something. First is, you know, your discussion about tree removals tonight and whatnot, and, you know, the references made to what are protected trees, and, and, you know, the city's regulations for trees is kind of timely, the, the city council's requested that the city look at our current ordinance and regulations pertaining to tree removal and tree preservation, so that's an ongoing staff effort, and I think it would be helpful if the commission would like to appoint a subcommittee of one or two commission members to, to work a little more closely with staff, as well as at least one member of the OSEC, Open Space Ecology Committee, who's also be looking at this issue. So we'd entertain a motion, or if you're willing to consider that, appointing a one or two commissioners who have an interest in this issue, and it seems like from your testimony these evenings, deliberations, you, a number of commissioners seem to have an interest in the issue, so I defer to, to the chair, how do you want to proceed on that?
Okay, so do we have interest from the commission, who, commissioners who would like to participate on a subcommittee?
Yeah, I have interest.
Okay, that's two right there. So could we have a motion for formation of a subcommittee from planning to work with staff regarding preservation and tree replacement?
Yeah, the current ordinance. And again, logistically, we're looking at either, not a lot of meetings, but would happen probably through late June into July, so as long as whoever's wants to serve on that is going to be available, that would be the only time constraint you have, so I'll put that out there, too.
Okay, so could we have a motion for formation of a subcommittee?
I move that we form a tree subcommittee.
And a second, please?
Yes, okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, motion carries. Thank you.
And then the other item is just informational, you probably are aware of it, that the council had a, another meeting on the baylands, general plan language last week, and no resolution to that issue, like, I continue to the twenty-first of June, and maybe additional meetings beyond that point, so we'll keep you posted as that winds itself through.
Thank you very much. Do we have any items initiated by the commission?
Oh, through the chair, sorry.
Sure.
We did have one more item.
Yes.
It looks like we'll be canceling the July tenth meeting, so FYI.
Thank you. Back to items initiated, initiated by the commission?
I've got one question as a follow-up, we've, we've sort of bounced around the possibility of moving these meetings, I'm not pushing any, anywhere together, but is any other, any further update on your inclinations?
I think we agreed that we could come back with that schedule starting in August, and we'll come back with a formal amendment to your rules to implement that, but we were going to do it in July, but the council's schedule is still in flux for July, so.
I'm now reminded.
You're right, thanks.
Okay, anyone else? No? All right, I will entertain a motion for adjournment to our next meeting of June twenty-six, twenty eighteen.
I'll move to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.